Call this meeting in Mobley City Council order, please rise and pledge allegiance.
Praise the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row call please.
Brew Baker.
Here.
Lucas.
Present.
Jeffrey.
Here.
Kaiser.
Here.
Kimmons.
Here.
Okay, if there is anyone here this evening to address the council, please fill out the green card located in the foyer and present it to the clerk. You'll have four minutes to address the council towards the end of the meeting. You should have received agenda in your packets. Are there any corrections or changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, agenda is approved. Council minutes, you should have received the last two meetings of council minutes in your packets. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
And a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Mr. Thompson, do you have any visitors you would like to recognize this evening?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Next up, we have a consent agenda this evening. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to remove for discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to read the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and second, all those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read the consent agenda by title one time?
Bill number R one five five two, a resolution authorizing lifting public consumption, use of public parking, use of the fennel complex, and hanging a banner in support of the Chamber of Commerce 2023 Christmas Festival. Bill number R one five five three, a resolution adopting the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the granting of a conditional use permit to McKenzie Riley to construct a car wash facility. Bill number R one five five four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for professional services with Bartlett and West, Inc., for engineering of all components of the industrial park infrastructure grant project. Bill number R one five five five, a resolution approving a service agreement with Cummins, Inc., for three fire engines and one aerial truck. Bill number R one five five six, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with Allstate Consultants LLC for Rothwell Lakes spillway improvements. Bill number R one five five seven, a resolution authorizing the purchase of park land from Matthew and Alicia Martin. Bill number R one five five eight, a resolution accepting the proposal of Van de Venter Engineering, a cogent company, in authorizing the purchase of a flight pump for the Darwood lift station. Bill number R one five five nine, a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Schneider's Excavating Company for the downtown combined sewer overflow EDA project. Bill number one five six zero, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a letter agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc., for professional engineering services related to the Northwest Regional Lift Station. And bill number R one five six one, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a letter agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc., for professional engineering services related to the Logan Street Waterline Replacement Project.
Okay, is there any further discussion on any of these items? Ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda items are approved. Next is number twelve.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance repealing portions of section forty dash five hundred and adopting new provisions related to driveways, as to be read twice for consideration.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading.
An ordinance repealing portions of section forty dash five hundred and adopting new provisions of sections forty dash five hundred and forty-six dash one seventy-six related to driveways.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, second reading please.
An ordinance repealing portions of section forty dash five hundred and adopting new provisions of sections forty dash five hundred and forty-six dash one seventy-six related to driveways.
Okay, any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So, second.
We have a motion and a second. Row call please.
Brew Baker?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance is passed. Number thirteen.
Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing two cooperative agreements for infill development with Studio Spillman, ask for them to be read twice for consideration.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor for the reading of the ordinance, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading.
An ordinance authorizing two cooperative agreements for infill development with Studio Spillman, a Missouri limited liability company.
Any further discussion? Second reading please.
An ordinance authorizing two cooperative agreements for infill development with Studio Spillman, a Missouri limited liability company.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, row call please.
Brew Baker?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
Okay, number fourteen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission Transportation Enhancement Funds Program Agreement for sidewalks on North Morley Street, I ask if you read twice for consideration of passage.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, is there a second?
Second.
Have a second, all those in favor for the reading of the ordinance, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Enhancement Funds Program Agreement for sidewalks on North Morley Street.
Any further discussion? Mr. Jeffrey.
This will be from Mr. Sanders. So is the TAP money, is that separate from the pool money that we're doing South Morley? Because it just seems strange to me that there's a way to get sidewalks done, and then we got to wait two years to have a street that isn't rough.
Absolutely it is, yeah, this money is specifically designated for sidewalk trails, that kind of project, they peel off a certain percentage and can't be used for other.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Second reading please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Enhancement Funds Program Agreement for sidewalks on North Morley Street.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Row call please.
Brew Baker?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Next is number fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for demolition with St. Pius Church, ask to be read twice for consideration of passage.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Or, excuse me, all those in favor for the reading of the ordinance, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading.
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for demolition with St. Pius the Tenth Church.
Any further discussion? Mr. Jeffrey.
So do you estimate it at seven or eleven? Because I saw.
Seven thousand is the quote we received from Holman for the demolition, and we'd have landfill fees on top of that, so that's just, seven thousand is just the demolition and loading up of materials, and we'd have to get landfill fees, asbestos costs, you know, and other associated fees, utility disconnects.
So that total is what, then?
Don't have a total on that, that's just.
No, when we do have that total, that's, you're just doing all these together.
Yeah, yeah, so it's just.
That's a separate bill out then.
Yeah, Holman is only doing, is not doing the landfill fees and things like that, so that's separate, he has a bid for the component that he does. And so the other ones are unknown at this point, we have done preliminary asbestos work, and so it looks like it's going to be minimal, but they've agreed to pay the total once we have a bill tallied.
Thank you.
You know, when I read that, I was thinking eleven thousand was the estimate for all that.
That's ballpark, what, so we did.
It is, and that's.
Yeah, we think so, seven thousand is the only known cost we have right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, second reading please.
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for demolition with St. Pius the Tenth Church.
Any further discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, row call please.
Brew Baker?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
Okay, next is number sixteen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution of the City of Mobley, Missouri, authorizing the Mobley Fire Department to make two grant applications, ask to be read once for consideration.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First and only reading.
A resolution of the City of Mobley, Missouri, authorizing the Mobley Fire Department to make two grant applications through the Missouri Department of Public Safety for first responder equipment.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is passed. Number seventeen.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution of the City of Mobley, Missouri, accepting a Missouri Department of Public Safety Grant Award for counterterrorism office equipment, ask for it to be read once for consideration.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First and only reading.
A resolution of the City of Mobley, Missouri, accepting a Missouri Department of Public Safety Grant Award for counterterrorism officer equipment.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Next is number eighteen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the City of Mobley, Missouri, to pay expenses due between November third, twenty twenty-three, and November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand eighty-six dollars and fourteen cents, and ask if you read once for consideration of passage.
Okay, we have a motion for the reading of the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First and only reading.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the City of Mobley, Missouri, to pay expenses due between November third, twenty twenty-three, and November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand eighty-six dollars and fourteen cents.
I hereby certify that there is sufficient money standing to the credit, the City of Mobley, Missouri, unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution, to meet the requirements of this resolution, City Treasurer Matthew P. Douglas. Any further discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Next I have nineteen, which is the department head monthly reports.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For Mr. Sanders. Tom, we've been working for years to work on the rental property inspections, and now they've got it where they put it in the owner's name, and we never know when anybody's moved in or out. Is it out of line to require an annual inspection on all rental property?
I would, probably wouldn't, you know, we have a lot of people who are complying, you know, the ones that do keep it in their name, so, you know, really getting in there where they're occupied is kind of a hassle, you happen to schedule that, so using the water billing as the, as the time of when they change occupancy is the best, and we would hope that people would utilize that and comply with that, but we have several that we know are bypassing that, so, I mean, I think in those situations where they retain their water in their name, that might be a good option, but I'd hate to look at it as a whole.
Well, that's a good point, yeah. Alright, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Jeffrey?
So this one will be for Mr. Sanders. You've got a little paragraph in your notes about the ARPA Fennel, and talking about the engineering estimates being high, and we've had so many different parts of different ARPA, well, just different grants and such, I'm a little confused, but I was under the assumption that we got a grant, and then we were supposed to match that grant.
That's correct.
And one of them was about a half a million, and we were going to have to match a half a million. So, are you saying in, in these estimates that those estimates are exceeding those two numbers put together?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess, I can just speak for myself, that I would rather that you come up with the plan on what you recommend to do, and then if it's above those numbers, then we can decide if we want to spend enough to get that, instead of starting from, there's something that we're not going to exceed that, because we want to, we want to do it right.
Yes, and so what I'm going to do is I've asked them to, we really don't, right now it's all engineering speculation, so I feel like the best way to go forward with this is to put it out for bid, and see where the real numbers come in at, and that's what we're shooting for, and then once we have those hard numbers on, here's the scope we originally shot for, here's the real number, not engineers' estimates, then we can make that decision, and we'll run that by you all.
So, in other words, you're, you're going to give us estimates of what you think, how you think it ought to be redone?
We have estimates on that now, but I.
I mean, there's a lot of interpretation in that, like, well, you know, we don't need this, or we do need this, or, we, certain doors, or whatever it is, but.
I think it's too early to guess at that right now, so that's why we want to go out for bid on what we originally proposed, do the community center as a whole, get those bids back, see where the components come out, in reality, what the real bids are, and then we can see how far off they are, I mean, the engineers might be overly conservative, they might be under, I, I'm thinking they're shooting a little high, based on some discussions I've had with some contractors, but we really just need to have hard numbers back to, to analyze where we're at, and what we can, what we can do with it.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lucas.
I think we would be kind of remiss if we didn't at least touch on the, the little situation that we had last week with the, the smell and the, the lagoon ponds, could we get maybe just a little bit of an update on, you know, the, the, either the plan, or kind of what's, what's happening with that, just maybe, because I know there's a lot of people that are listening in, that are wondering if we're even going to discuss it, so I thought it would be good to at least provide them a little bit of something that's happening, not to put you on the spot or anything.
A little update, so last Friday, we put in a chemical called bioxide into the, into the CSO we do, it's an eight million, million gallon facility, and it's been there for my whole life, I don't know when it was originated there, but I think this year's been a little, it's been significantly worse on the odor, from what I can remember, I've only been here with the city two years, so I'm just kind of getting caught up in speed on it, but there has been, there were several complaints in early spring, and we got some, we got some, got, got a lot of rain, and that helped out, but then it's been significantly worse since about the last three or four weeks, we put a chemical, the same chemical in it the first, I think, October sixth, and it seemed to help for about four weeks, and then it's been honestly rancid for the last two or three weeks, you know, it's been awful for the local residents there. We contracted that same company to come in, they came in last Friday, but I believe it was fourteen hundred gallons of that bioxide in there, which is essentially nitrates. This rain is going to drastically help, hopefully tonight, the next day, in the cooler temperatures, we've kind of had a perfect storm the last few months with being in severe drought conditions, same as downtown, you know, the smell downtown's the same with the combination sewer, we had our crews flush hydrants into the downtown storm drains and sewers over the weekend to help with the downtown smell, it's pretty much the same, same cause. We have company coming, makes pipe leading, it's coming, hopefully a week from today, there's a, there's some buildup on the surface of the lagoon at Rollins, we're going to have that, that removed, we'll have to put that in our drying bed, or some dumpsters, it has to dry before the landfills, second. And then Emily Lute, the chief water operator, has several proposals for long-term solutions.
Good, good.
Which, none of those are cheap or fast, it'll take some, some three-phase electric will have to be extended, possibly, it's a new water line, just depending on what route herself, and we as a whole choose on what route to go forward, but we're making some progress, and we're trying all that we can, but hopefully this weather and some cooler temperatures will.
Good.
Will help prevail.
Good. Yeah, thank you for the update, I just felt like we could at least touch on it.
Any questions?
Hey, you mentioned the long-term solutions, when will those be presented to us?
Hopefully as soon as possible, she's got, she's got a group of them, so we're going to go through those probably with our consultant, with Jacobs Engineering, and try to figure out the, the best cost for results that we can get, you know, everything's kind of a, I think odor, everything is kind of a trial and error thing, so we want to make sure if we're going to spend six figures on something that it, that it works, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Kaiser?
Along the same vein, you mentioned that you're going to have to put it into dumpsters or something to dry out, is there any concern about a rotting smell or anything when it's drying, in the drying process?
It's very possible.
Is it possible to have that drying process happen somewhere other than right there, so that it's easier to burn?
At the moment, that is the only drying bed area that we have, Emily Lute is looking at some dewatering dumpsters that I believe are self-contained, so she's actually checked into that today to see if there's a rental, a rental that we can use for those, but the landfill won't take them until it's completely dried.
Understood, is that something we can do outside of town on our properties, or? I'm just thinking of the.
It's very possible, it's, it's very possible, we would just have to, have to pour concrete somewhere to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it has to be, has to be on a concrete bed, with walls, and contained, so it can't run off to the waters of the state, or, so, currently there at Rollins, that's where our DC back trucks, that's where they put, when they, when they clean sewers, that's where they put their stuff currently.
Okay.
We modified it last year when we had an SSO, and put some, put some temporary walls around it, so it would hold more.
So it's not a simple dumpster like I think of a construction dumpster sitting somewhere? Okay, fair enough.
So each dumpster has to be lined with plastic, it has to be completely dry before the Columbia land.
That was my question.
Other questions? About any, for any of the department heads?
I've got one for chamber.
You have one? Mr. Lucas?
Uh, no, for, for the chamber. Megan, I was wondering, obviously the city's got a pretty, pretty significant investment in the, in the ice rink, and the, the Christmas setup and whatnot, I wonder if you could just give us a quick update, how it's going, the response that, that you've received, it seems like it's, it's gone well so far, so I was wondering if we could just, hear just a little bit about that.
Sure. So, things are going very well, I think, right now, we have, what are we, four days from opening? Yeah, four days from the rink opening, the response has been a little bit overwhelming, in a good way, so, which is a nice change of pace, so, the first pricing ad that we put out, it wasn't even an ad, it was just a post, it was shared over nine hundred times organically on Facebook, so that means we hadn't put any dollars behind it, we have a giveaway scheduled for Wednesday of a family pack of tickets, so the value's twenty-five, is it a one hour?
Yeah, it's a one hour.
Yeah, twenty-five dollars, it's been shared almost three hundred times.
Cool.
So, we can see that people are serious about looking for family activities. Things to do still, we have a little bit of decorating to still wrap up around the rink, we still have some ornaments and a star to put at, at the top of the donated Christmas tree, we do have a star to put on the Christmas tree, or, I'm sorry, the home care tree, next to the bean and home care, there's a couple of things to do up and down the street, but really, we're about ready to go for the fennel, so.
Good.
Yep.
We're excited about it, I look for big things from that, it's going to be neat.
Yep, we are excited, we're hoping that, you know, right now the rain is delaying rink prep with the final application of the products, to make it slippery, so, we're just a little bit nervous that the rain is slowing us down in that regards, but hopefully park staff will have it ready to rock on Friday.
Megan, this is not exactly in your area, but it pertains to what's happening downtown.
Sure.
This, I believe it was this past weekend that Parks and Rec and the library put on, I mean.
The dinosaurs? Yeah, that was a huge, great event, all I've heard is, great things out of the dinosaurs.
Me too.
And I was in a shop downtown today, and they've got that, the, the schedule of when the rink's going to be open, and they're really excited about the Christmas festivities,
Yes.
So I really, you guys are killing it.
Yeah, serve like same day was Friday, so when you leave tonight, you'll get to see that all the trees are lit, and all the decorations are on, there's just a few outlets that we'll have to take some attention, you know, look at later, but other than that, it's really, everything seemed, went really smoothly, so, they're serve like same day, things are good.
Good, thank you.
I have a question on the, the skating rink, the skates, how many do you have?
There are about three hundred pairs, is that right?
Three hundred pairs.
Two hundred, okay.
And then, what's the limitation of how many people can be on there at one time?
So based on the square footage compared to other rinks, we're at seventy for our capacity.
Seventy?
Mm-hmm, we will dial that back if it looks like it's out of control, or in any way, we did have about fifty-four skaters, we completed fifty-four waivers when we did the KOMU commercial a few weeks ago, and the rink felt fine, Brandon was there, so he can probably speak to that as well, so, Brandon skated. But, yeah, so I think we're going to be alright, we're just going to see, it, it really depends on their abilities, so if you're flailing around, might be a little bit more space, if you can skate, everything should be okay.
That would be neat.
Yeah, we do have skate assists, you know, for really small kids, I did order one for a taller person, but I've never seen how this thing works, so we're going to try it out this first weekend, we're going to give it a go, just with the six skating assistant things, so, and after that, if we need more, we'll adjust. This weekend, it is operated by the chamber board, and all of our supervisors, so, as you know, there's a committee of seven volunteer supervisors who are responsible for the rink for the next seven weeks, so the chamber board and the supervisors will all train and learn together on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and I'm out of town, so.
Do you have commitments for all the other?
We do, actually, every weekend is locked in, we did adjust Christmas Eve, the MACC Veterinary Technology Program is operating the rink. Veterinary Technology Program is operating the rink that day, we had been discussing with the other supervisors, just that we might need to change the hours, so Sunday hours are from three to seven P M., so they're gonna adjust those from noon to four, since it is Christmas Eve, but we all felt pretty passionate that the rink should be open on Christmas Eve, just to give families a Christmas activity another opportunity, we've had lots of comments and questions, if we're gonna extend the season, we don't plan on it, but there's been really, really good feedback, so hopefully it'll skate well, and everyone will have positive feedback, and we'll be ready to go for the next weekend on the Christmas festival, because there are expanded hours on that Saturday also, so the rink will actually be in operation from one to nine on December second, so, and the high school seniors are operating it that weekend, so, they're gonna have a lot of fun. Any other questions?
Any other questions? No, thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Okay, do we have any other questions for any of the other department heads? Nope? Okay, anything else to come before the council? At this time, if there's anyone here to address the council, please step forward, present your card to the clerk, and state your name and address for the record, you'll have four minutes to address the council. One at a time, please. Okay. So, I would consider, is there anything else to come before the council this evening? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn to work session?
So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? We adjourn to work session. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the work session tonight, we have a very short agenda. Just the one item there, and that's the Parks Department, Troy?
So this would be for the second phase of the grant project at Quanus Park, which is the playground, after that first phase, which is the hardscape, is complete, this additional scope for Bartlett and West would allow for them to develop all the necessary documents for that playground bid, and, and bid it out, we're hoping to bid it out next spring, and that way we'll set the table well ahead of time for spring twenty twenty-five construction of that phase, there's a lot of lead time right now on playground equipment and the, the labor for the professional installation.
Okay, any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, would you, are you all in favor of moving this one forward to the... Okay, well, we'll move this one to, forward to the next city council meeting, that's the only item that we had. So, is there anything else to come for the work session? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn. Thank you all for coming.
What? I did, yes.
Thank you, we got it.